Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
All right, I think we're a little bit late here, so can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. I do have an inspirational word. Well, you could do one too then. Good morning, welcome to the September 4th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our thought for today from me is, today wherever you go, carry the intention of peace, love, and harmony in your heart. And Sharon, you also have one?
I brought one as well. And I heard this, I did borrow it from Illyria Library's word for the day. Most of life's problems can be narrowed down to acting without thinking and thinking without acting.
Very good. All right. And our dog this morning from our dog warden, Mr. Pillblad.
This is kennel number 31. It's a Jack Russell Beagle mix. He's about one year old. He's available on the 7th, which is Saturday. We're really full.
Uh-oh.
We picked up 11 dogs over the weekend. Hopefully that we get a lot of redemptions, I'm thinking that. But yeah, come see us, we have 31 dogs now. Thanks.
Wow, he's pretty though.
Mm-hmm.
Wow, he's pretty though.
Thank you, Tim. Madam Clerk?
Do you want to do the presentation or do you want to go through all the board business first? It's your choice. This is not a hearing, it's just a presentation.
It's not a hearing, yeah, we could do the presentation if she's ready.
Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Crime Lab Levy, Elizabeth Doyle, Director.
I'm Elizabeth Doyle from the Lorraine County Crime and Drug Lab. I took over as Director this past April. My predecessor had started a lot of really great programs that we're excited about and I'm really glad that I get to come up here and talk about the crime lab because it's one of my passions. It's something I just, I've been working there for 13 years and I just really love it. And if IT would go ahead and put my PowerPoint up for me?
Wow, it's magic. So far, so good. Wow, that was cool.
Everybody can see it okay?
Yep.
All right. So, as everyone knows, we have a crime lab levy coming up this November and I wanted to talk a little bit about what the crime lab does and how supporting a crime lab really does support not only the community but the police departments and the courts. So, the first thing I want to talk about a little bit is, when you support the crime lab, you're supporting the safety of our police officers. They're no longer using their field testing kits, or at least not using them as much. So those are little roadside kits that you would put a little bit of powder in, you would break that powder, and if a color change happened, that could indicate that there was drugs in that powder. But because fentanyl is so deadly, officers are worried about getting it on their hands and then touching their face, touching their eyes, or bringing it home if it's on their clothing. So now they're no longer field testing them. That creates a problem also for the courts. So the courts are backed up because they're, they used to have these field tests where they could get an indictment or get a warrant. They don't have that anymore. So now the courts and the police departments are depending on the laboratory to have fast and accurate results to make sure that we're just not a bottleneck in that criminal justice system. We also offer instructions. So we've had some officers call us and say, "How do you want things bagged now that fentanyl is here and opioids are so deadly? Just very small amount can be a problem." So we've been able to give them instructions and work with them on how to safely handle those things. And we've been very lucky in Lorraine County that we haven't had a lot of law enforcement or first responder exposures, but those that we do, those powders, those things that officers are exposed to, those are priority in our laboratory. We make sure that we get those results right away. We can have them in as little as 45 minutes if all the stars align correctly. The state laboratory is about a 45-minute drive away, so that gives you some idea of, we are right downtown in Illyria, we can act very quickly. And the little picture I have here, we have some pills and I wanted to draw your attention to those like one and a half kind of bluish colored pills. They have markings on them that indicate that they are a prescription medicine. They are not. When we tested them, they came up positive for a type of fentanyl that was involved in an overdose recently. So even pills, officers are being very cautious when they're handling that and we make sure to tell them, "Hey, this is what we're seeing. We're seeing pills that look like one thing, but they're not, they're another." Other ways, the, supporting the crime lab supports, police departments is not only officer and public safety, but overdoses. So once upon a time, overdoses were, the person has died, that's the end of the police involvement. But now that Operation SOS is enforced, people who sell fentanyl that kills people are charged accordingly. And so now there isn't just one piece of evidence coming in with an overdose, it's an investigation and it goes over months. And we have multiple submissions that are coming in and then, once they get a search warrant, everything from the search warrant comes into us too.
Just for the, for the public, SOS is Surge of Synthetics?
Yes. It's a, I think it's a federal program, if I'm remembering correctly, that because Lorraine County has had so many overdose deaths, that the government is really cracking down on that here. So some of the good news from the courts is that the courts are now using diversion. So people that are, don't belong in jail, are not in jail, they're with their families, they're at work. Yes, many people even with addiction have jobs and they have families and friends and church communities. And so if the courts are using diversion, people are out of jail. And one of the ways the laboratory helps with that is we do urine drug screening. So if somebody needs that attention to make sure that they abstain from drugs, they know that they're going to be coming in sometime in the next week for a random drug test and we do those tests for them. So we help the drug courts. I know the city of Illyria just started a drug court. And another way we support the courts is, we are in the basement of this building, so we are right across the street from the Justice Center and we, we are able to go over to testify whenever they need us, for the most part. We try to be very flexible with that, whereas the state lab, they serve all 88 counties and that's not any shade on them, it's not trying to disparage them, that's just what it is. They're not very close by. And so, in doing these things, we are helping to try to keep drug dealers off the streets. So the faster we can get those lab reports and everything to the police departments, the faster we can get them to the courts, the faster those arrests can be made. We also offer a laboratory newsletter for the public that's on our website, that comes out about quarterly. I think we have missed a few issues, but it's back on. That just has some relevant drug information for the public. Also, we offer help with the addiction recovery process by doing the urine drug tests. And if you are the victim of a drug crime, you are going to want answers. If you are hit by a drunk driver, we may get that blood sample, if we get that blood sample, we want to have that out the next day to the police departments so that they can act accordingly. And the same if one of your loved ones or yourself overdoses. Nobody thinks it happens to them or it would happen in their family, but it does. The pills in this picture is something that I'm proud of, it was a case I worked on. There was 500 of those pills, they had markings that indicated that they were oxycodone. They were actually a synthetic opioid called U47700. Kind of at the same time, another small laboratory, Lake County, also saw this drug and we kind of, it was the first time we had seen it in Ohio and we kind of had to collaborate, we're seeing this data, what does this mean? And we kind of came up at the same time with this. So I'm pretty proud that Lorraine, our little crime lab was able to work with another little crime lab to identify that.
Good work.
Thank you. So the good news is, is that overdoses submissions to the laboratory are down, which I hope indicates that the public health actions and the actions of putting people in recovery is helping. But the bad news is, you can see that they are still not down to the 2015 levels, which we were seeing maybe one or two a year. And actually, the 2019 numbers are a little low, just this past week we had two more overdose cases come in. So they're still coming in pretty steadily.
So the blue is the deaths?
Yes. Those are the deaths, those are just what's submitted to the laboratory. So if somebody has overdosed and died and there's, say, a loved one cleans up any of the drug residue, we wouldn't get anything on that case. So these numbers are just what's submitted to the laboratory. And that's just the number of cases, it's not the bag of evidence, the bags of evidence that come in per case, which if I did have a chart of that, I would expect 2019 to be very high, higher than the other ones.
And Elizabeth, when did they start the amping up using the Narcan? Because I'm sure that's affected some of these statistics.
Yeah, I would, I would say that it probably has, I want to say it was 2017 when it was really getting popular among people for the public to carry it.
So it's pulled back on the fatal overdoses at least?
I think so. In talking to first responders, not just, not just police departments but fire departments, things like that, they are using Narcan consistently.
I'm a big fan of Dr. Phil and he was, had a new program on last night and he actually was talking about Narcan and how wonderful it is and like he had just heard about it and I'm thinking, "Man, we've known about Narcan for a long time, Dr. Phil."
It's summer, it might be a rerun.
No, no, it was a new one. It was a new one, yeah.
So Narcan, we actually keep some in our laboratory. We have some in one section for the public and one section for us in the back because we are working with these dangerous chemicals. So we've been very fortunate that nothing has happened. We take lots of safety precautions, but we have things just in case. Some of the recent projects that the crime lab has just started is juvenile fingerprinting. So when juveniles are sentenced to the court system, if the judge determines that they need their fingerprints taken, we go ahead and do that for the courts, just another service that we can offer to try and alleviate some of that work for them. We've worked with our manufacturer and we've added some different drug screening protocols. So now on our urine drug test, we can test for 11 types of drugs. And just yesterday, we started taking in probationers to take their urine drug testing samples. So that's why I feel a little frazzled because everything was brand new yesterday. Here are just some of the terrible fentanyls that we are seeing. Just wanted to put that out there. These are just what we're seeing in Lorraine County in the last few years.
I had no idea there were that many types.
There's, there are hundreds of possible opioids out there. These are just what we're seeing. The one that's underlined, the MTMP, that just came in two weeks ago, our analyst was able to confirm that. That's very similar to what's known as a bath salt, if you're familiar with those. Those haven't gone away, they're still around. But it's actually used in making paint that is toxic to humans. So this was actually found in pill form. So we're seeing a lot of pills that have these bath salts and fentanyls in them. Let's talk about the future a little bit and some things that we're looking forward if we, especially if we get this levy passed. Fingerprinting of the adults, so we have the same equipment that we use for the juveniles, we would just need perhaps more room and some extra staff for that. Officers have, I've reached out to some of the police departments and they actually have asked that we could make some sort of training, either video or pamphlet that they could give to new officers, so they don't have to keep retraining them, so we don't have to keep calling them and things like that. And I'm perfectly willing to work with them on that. They've also asked for toxicology. So as of right now, we, on our blood testing, the only thing we can test for on a blood test is alcohol and that is through our permit through the Ohio Department of Health. The officers have asked, is there a way to expand that into drug testing? Several years ago, we had to shut down our latent print examining section due to, there wasn't a lot of case flow coming in, but the officers are still asking for that, so they don't have to drive it all the way down to BCI and the person would be right here.
Spine what latent print testing is?
Oh sure, that's, when something is found at a crime scene that could possibly have fingerprints on it, either the officer will lift it up on some tape or bring, if it's a small item, will bring the item in and the analyst would take that. They would then, I, they would then put it into a computer system called AFIS and that would be able to look at, is that person already in the system?
Thank you.
Let's talk a little bit about the move. So we are in the old cafeteria right now. And as you can see, there is a nice piece of laboratory equipment right next to the fryer. So we do get a lot of comments at people asking for french fries, onion rings, things like that when they come in.
I didn't know that was a...
A table down there.
Well, I mean, I don't know if you'd want to, you'd want us to make it?
I knew the building. This used to be the small cafeteria that was down there and we had...
Repurposed.
There was all of our equipment, so we didn't rip it out when we moved the lab and the parts of that.
Right.
And then our purchasing department used to be in your administrative space down there, so we worked around all of that.
I mean, honestly, we just, we will make do with whatever we have, but it is kind of funny that we have a fryer right next to our laboratory equipment. But we do have an increased clientele, so we just started taking probation clients yesterday. And we did, we normally would do about 10 to 12 tests a day and we had about 60 to 70 yesterday.
Wow.
So, we were popping, we were busy. Now, I am somebody who loves to be frazzled, I love to be busy and everything, so this is actually really nice for me, but we would need more space and perhaps more staff. If we move to a permanent location, we can look at getting the lab accredited. And if we have that accreditation, we may be able to apply for grants and things like that. Also, if we would move to a permanent location, there's been talk of the county evidence room, so we would be partnering with that. And just having a centralized county evidence room would mean that the evidence for court cases would be kept in one area and it would be organized. We'd have an evidence technician that could go in and make sure everything's audited and everything's in place. And also, we are, once again, we'd be downtown and that would be great for the courts. So this is no new information for anyone here, the crime lab levy is $2.80 per year on a house that's $100,000. And it would last for five years and I just want to reiterate that supporting a strong local crime lab does support the police departments, it supports the courts, it alleviates some of that bottleneck in the criminal justice system. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
You're doing a wonderful job down there. I didn't realize how much increase in, in people coming to use the urinalysis lab, so that's, that's a huge amount of people in that little space.
Yep. We have quite a good reputation that we are proud of, so.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you for your good work down there and thank your team.
You can see why, give us some video, somebody. Okay, we faded the black here. The, the, why we need to move the lab. The lab started over in the old Chicago title building in the basement and, and you used to have to duck your head to walk down where they were doing urinalysis because it was like a five-foot-eleven ceiling down there. We tore all those buildings down to make way for the Justice Center and it got orphaned all around downtown, moving different places. And when we renovated the courthouse, we didn't think it was a good fit with putting it back in the courthouse, so we, we sandwiched it in down the lower level of this building as a temporary home till we, we could repurpose the building on Broad Street, which we knew we were putting money into to temporarily house adult probation. The plan has been to move the lab into the Broad Street building and do the front, renovate the front of the building properly for the lab. However, we need to get a levy passed to be able to increase services to the community and the safety forces in the community and guarantee sustainability and continuation of the lab. I had the dubious pleasure of closing the original lab in 1994. That's when Kavanaugh's, he's like, come to tell you didn't have hair in 94 either. So, but Dennis Kavanaugh and myself went to, it was at the Community College and we closed the original crime lab at the Community College. I think it was 94 or 95 when we did that, maybe in that timeframe. And we really haven't been able to, with the small amount of revenue we receive, about $150,000 a year, have not been able to continue sustaining the works that it needs to do. And, and we thought we would get, and we were close to getting, I believe, community support several years ago, but the board fractured after a little bit of time on the levy and drove a wedge into the support from the community in that. I'm hoping that we can reestablish that support. We're not asking for a lot for the lab and the important work it does, but it does need to, it does need to gain a revenue stream to be able to continue on. We've just recently made some big partnerships, we're regaining traction, we're doing all the work now for adult probation. You know, as our relationships have improved over the last couple of years, we've been able to get more effectiveness and efficiency out of the monies that we do have and the resources that we have. And we want to continue to pursue those things. We're doing fingerprinting now for all the juvenile offenders in all of Lorraine County so that they don't have to go into the local police departments, which creates a problem there because then they have to separate them from the adult offenders, so there's, there's different issues with moving them around. And domestic courts was having some issues with that, how to get that done because they required the fingerprint by law, all of, anybody that enters their system and that wasn't happening. So we stepped in and we provide that resource now and we, we have that equipment and we, we just heard that there may be a problem with the adult offenders and...
Right. They have a backlog of 150 about, right now, people that they need fingerprinted.
And so we're, we're looking at that issue. One of the things is that some jurisdictions do not do fingerprinting. Found that out and say, Illyria doesn't do fingerprinting. That came to my knowledge about a week ago when we were having conversation.
Correct.
And so they go out to the jail, but the jail's fingerprinting is behind the secure area.
Right, so they have to pat the person down and put them in. Also, there was concerns that if somebody has an active warrant, they may just not go in to that, whereas if they come...
I wouldn't.
If they come, if they come to the laboratory, we're not going to check that.
Let's go to the jail and get ourselves fingerprinted while you've got an outstanding warrant.
Yeah. We don't check for warrants in the laboratory, they can, they can come in and get their prints taken. Nobody's going to get okay with that case.
Right, so they failed to report and they failed to get the thing, these requirements satisfied. So the Corker Courts is actually the one tasked with getting these fingerprint, keeping these fingerprint trials updated and they, during an audit, they were found to be out of compliance. So we're looking to provide these community structural supports for the criminal justice system, but like anything else, they, they need, they cost money to do. But this is all the underpinnings of dealing with the problems out in our society and backing up our safety forces so that they're well protected when they're, when they're the first responders on the scene, so they know what's going on out there. So the levy's important to us. It'll raise, it'll raise about $500,000 a year, be able to buy the right equipment, be in the right location to be able to service the community and provide, hopefully, additional services that, that will be needed in the future. We're going to continue to dialogue over the next few weeks here and we'll be, we, we have the no-money campaign going.
Right. Well, you mentioned the last time we had that, this levy on the ballot, that we had a fractured board, but that was prior to the opioid epidemic, so this is a little bit different this time. And the other thing that really interested me, what you mentioned, was if we get the right space, we can then apply for grants.
Yes.
So we access federal or state grants that we now can't get?
Leverage dollars.
Right.
We can't do it in a current situation.
No, we can't do it in a, first of all, we can't get accreditation in a temporary location. It, it would be a waste of money, first of all, and I don't know that they would do it for a temporary space.
Good. Well, that's pretty important information.
We're operating on the same funds that were inadequate in 1988.
Right.
The board was supplementing those funds back in the early 90s to try to help out and there was other revenue streams coming in and, you know, the, the, it wasn't sustainable then and we've been trying to, through unique relationships, make it sustainable now. It's, it's done there, impossible to continue on with that kind of outlook for the future. So do we move forward or do we stand still or do we close the door? Some tough decisions are going to have to be made next year with regard to where we go with, with that lab. But right now, we're very, very busy providing very, very vital services and I'm hopeful that, that we'll get the community support we need.
Well, and I think it's important to keep in mind, we do need to support our, our officers, our first responders. Nobody wants to be out on the street unprotected and if, if they're, they're risking their well-being to bring in these, these offenders, nothing more frustrating than that offender never being held accountable.
Exactly.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Okay. Under resolutions, number one, investments?
So moved. Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sueda?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved. Second?
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sueda?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved. Second?
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sueda?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved. Second?
Discussion.
Just one quick thing, Casey, I called Melissa yesterday, maybe she's, wasn't in, she's not in. There's a Columbia Gas requisition for $25,000. On the top it says Dog Kennel, but in the description it says Lorraine County Justice Center, so I wasn't sure, do you want me to just pull this one out or do you want to take a look at it? Should we hold that one? Okay, we're going to, can we pull that one? What's the number on that? It's $25,000. Just hold number 1196 until maybe after our executive session.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sueda?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sueda?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved. Second?
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sueda?
Aye.
Really efficient when Matt's not here, aren't we? Look at us go.
And she's got her second down? She's God.
And you get to vote on it.
I know.
You have to, because we can't, yeah, now you have to.
Authorized various personal actions as indicated on summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordes?
Thank you, Madam Vice President of the Board. And I do have a couple of personnel issues I'd like to discuss with Board, possible hires, 911, Golden Kennel. Maybe just a brief update on our ongoing negotiations and still circling around that property purchase. So, and I, trying to think, I don't have any legal matter this week, so those topics will live under the Sunshine Act for Executive Session Discussions and I would ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive sessions and we talk about those matters that I've outlined. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved with the reading in the minutes of August 28th?
So moved. Second?
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sueda?
Aye.
Airport accept grant offer and entered in agreement with FAA for rehab access road total cost project was $144,423.10, 90% federal share and 5% local and state share.
So moved. Second? Another 20-year commitment to the FAA starting...
Right, I think for the public, they should understand that whenever we accept funds, it ties us into the future, but we're already serving the future, so we can't really retract on that. Is that a simple...
You could buy your way out.
Yeah, I know.
It's 20 years from the last dollar.
Right.
So it's a rolling figure from when you can, you can do that. Some airports have attempted to sell and privatize. The last one that, that did that was, I believe, Lost Nations Airport on the, on the east side. Did something with a, with a private organization. They were, they had stopped taking federal dollars and midway through that journey, they did a privisation of the airport, I believe. I don't know a lot about it, but I know that there has been some efforts. Or you can do it the Mayor Daley approach when he was mayor in Chicago and just run the bulldozer across through the fence and down the runway and that didn't work too well for him.
Doesn't end good.
Didn't end well. But we're, we're pretty well locked in as it goes and, you know, the airport, it's, it's hard to do something with it.
Or you can do it the Mayor Daley approach when he was mayor in Chicago and just run the bulldozer across through the fence and down the runway. And that didn't work too well.
Doesn't end good.
Didn't end well. But we're, we're pretty well locked in as it goes and, you know, the airport, it's, it's, it's hard to do something with it. It's, it's, believe it or not, it's not a huge, huge drain on our local resources. Let's reiterate again that we put about fifty thousand and then here and there's some match money that's.
Like the five percent money.
To bring back a huge amount of federal money. But, but our commitment used to be, you know, six fifty, seven, eight hundred thousand, sometimes a million dollars a year, you know, back in the day and.
Before we disbanded the board.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. That, that was quite legendary now. But anyway, the, the, we're doing it with about fifty thousand plus, these occasional grants. Our minimum grant every year is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for maintenance. And then when money becomes available, they give us special opportunity grants. Some have been large. Everything at the airport's very old and, and dated, so we're always opportunistic when it comes to getting money to fix the taxiways or the, or the runway itself. I, I don't know where it's going to end with the airport, but people look at the budget online, they think that we're pumping millions of dollars into the airport.
We're growing corn.
Thirty thousand dollars a year from growing corn and that all goes back into the airport. Now, they're going to say, well, if you weren't in the airport, you can put that money in the general fund. That land was purchased with federal money out there. It's titled to the Commissioners. So that land would, was not, you wouldn't be able to grow corn and put it in the general fund if the airport was closed. Let me put it that way. So when we get a grant, that goes into the budget of the airport. So if we get a really big grant, the budget at the airport may look very, very large. Or if we roll up the hundred and fifty thousand, so we're saving for a bigger project, the carryover in budget may look exceptionally large for a year or two or three. And, you know, we've been criticised for that. But the, the money we give each year is about, the, the operations is about fifty thousand and, and there, we got the lights on, the gate open and then we got takeoffs and landings going and, you know, hopefully someday, something will improve where it has additional value to the community. Right now, it's, it's designated by the FAA as a reliever airport.
There's only so big of planes that we can accept there.
Well, let me explain what that means and, and I think it's important that we explain these things periodically. You're not going to see American Airlines, you know, dropping a seven forty-seven on, on the runway out there. Probably not going to see Southwest dropping a seven thirty-seven out there. A reliever airport is to take away private commercial traffic from the big airports should there be a need to land a lot of aircraft quickly, like there was at nine eleven, when they grounded.
Mm-hmm.
At all, all air traffic in, in certain areas. Small jets, private, private aircraft, they would be pushed out of the big airports into the reliever airports. Where one, Cuyahoga has a reliever airport. Burke Front is a bigger reliever airport because it can take some, some larger.
Electric planes.
That we, we can't.
What about the Ollieria one?
That's not, they don't, they don't receive federal dollars. The, so at this, at that point, when people go, well, why do you have that designation? That's what it is. It's not that we're going to land big commercial. We're going to, we're going to bring the, the, the stuff that's going to interfere with the big commercial traffic out of that airspace and into our airspace and then land it here or in the reliever airports. Every big airport has small reliever airports around it to, to clear the airspace when, when, when an emergency or some event occurs. And that's the FAA strategy on, on how to deal with whether it be a terrorist act or natural disaster or something along those lines. So that, that's what our designation is out there. Hope that's.
That's a good explanation. Thank you.
Excellent. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Community Development adopt updates to subdivision regulations for the uncorporate portions of Lorain County.
So moved.
Second.
I think, do, can we interject comment at this point?
Can, you're the boss. You can do anything you want.
So I would ask if we have anybody from the public who wanted to make any comments on the proposed changes so that Commissioner Kokowski and I at least understand that we're on the pathway that we, we perceived we would be on.
Phil Phillips, four sixty-one, Winwood Way, Avon Lake, Ohio, four four oh one two. I'm glad Commissioner Sueda offered the opportunity for public input because that's one of the problems with your public input. Except for today, you don't get public input when you have an agenda item. And that's one of the constructive criticism that I would like to make. There's been prior comments in prior meetings about the fact that this needs to be changed. David Ashton Hirsch has made the comment. I have made the comment.
Do you have a comment about the, the subdivision regulations?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'm commenting about the process, the fact that your process doesn't allow for.
We're not talking about commenting about that. We're talking about the regulations. If you have a comment on that, I'd be happy to hear it.
Focus, Mr. Phillips, focus.
Yeah, I take the criticism because you don't like me to talk, but anyway, I'll focus on it.
But that's not what this.
Oh, yes, it is. So today I received for the first time, even though I attended two public hearings, a summary of the proposed changes to the June tenth, two thousand and nineteen regulations, which you had the public hearing on. I don't have the detailed language. I noticed the clerk, Teresa Upton, to be giving updates on the agenda. I didn't get any of the updates to these proposed changes. Kristin gave me today the summary. I still don't have any detailed language. The one section I proposed, the change for section six oh nine, I object to the, to the actual language because it's ambiguous still, needs clarification, it's confusing, it's going to end up in litigation. I'm glad we got an opportunity to make some comments about the new revisions, but without the detailed language, it's really difficult. I think this process needs to be improved. The developers who attended the public hearings should have got the detailed language about the changes so they could offer an effective public comment. My other comments, it's not on the specific resolutions. It's not about your way you do the public comment. Since you're going to limit me, you know, I can't talk anymore. Plus, there's other items on the agenda that I wished I could have included, but I, I'll wait for the other three minutes.
I was going to say, you have another opportunity to come up and speak towards the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't we, why don't we address that concern he had? Kristin, you got a second?
Yeah, basically, I summarized his concerns. He had proposed quite a lengthy piece of language. Some of that was already incorporated into our subdivision regulations and other sections. So I did add a reference to both the county engineer's design specifications as well as our erosion and sediment control specifications. And I did add a statement indicating that the developer shall bear all costs for design and construction of the necessary improvements for waters and sanitary sewer.
And, and those were suggestions offered by Mr. Phillips at the last meeting.
Correct.
So we did take suggestions and the ones that we, we, we felt we could use, we did. We can't take everything everybody tells us. If we did, we'd never get done because everybody has a different view on things. But some of the suggestions were, were very salient and, and, and relevant and we did use some of those. As far as the developers go, let me also explain, I didn't say much about this at the, the last meeting. You and I have talked to developers for a couple of years about these changes and we've had other meetings with them about their concerns, about the lack of updates, and they've had made suggestions. So if they, even if they weren't at the public meeting, we, we were taking input over a long period of time from folks about what needed to go, what they thought needed to go into these, which culminated with bringing forth suggested changes and then presenting it at a public forum for additional comments. So this was not a process that just started at that public meeting. It, it had started over a period of about two years and, and also included members of the Planning Commission and.
Correct.
And so forth. So it was a much larger net that was cast over this to get these updates. It, it just didn't happen in a, in a small vacuum.
The first draft was sent out over a year ago.
The, the utility issue that had, everything, all the ducks had to be in a row in order for them to plat the.
Right.
Development, is that still, because they, that's the part that they had a complaint. They don't have any control over the utilities.
Right. We reached a compromise on that with the county engineer's office. We're going to require that all the roadway improvements, all the water improvements, all the sanitary improvements be installed prior to them applying for final approval of their plat so we can go ahead with that process. As far as the other utilities, which include the electric, the gas, cable, phone, that will require to be installed prior to the improvements being accepted. So they have a little bit of a window that we could work with after the plat's approved and before those improvements are accepted in order to get those other utilities in.
So they, they can get the roads in, the sidewalks in.
Correct.
And things like that. So, you know, that flexibility, that's usually what they're concerned with. They want to get, we want to get all that in and, you know, especially with, with the utility companies, you know, not being as responsive, they.
Their backlog.
Right. They want to get, they want to get certain process in there. I think it was a good compromise.
Yeah. And once the plat is approved and signed, then they can go ahead and start selling lots. So that way they're getting money in and getting some recruitment. And then we'll just need to get those utilities completed before the improvements are accepted.
And then you had a question about concrete stability?
That's a different, that's a different subject. We'll get into that. Maybe an exact.
Okay.
And the other concern that was brought up at the previous public hearing was about the sidewalks. And I did research Ohio Revised Code and we did change that to, the township does have the legal authority to assess those property owners. So instead of going under homeowners association, we changed that language that the township can in the event that they do not correct the sidewalks, that they can assess the property owners.
Yeah, there was some question of whether they, they had that authority. I thought they did. The, you go to the HOA and a lot of times they'll go defunct. Not all HOAs survive that. We, we had that problem at Brentwood and there really was no functioning HOA to, to go back and do the work that would, they were, they originally were required to do as an HOA that they failed to. So I, I think that makes a lot of sense to leave it in, in the control that way.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you comfortable?
Comfortable.
Okay. Want to call for a question?
Okay.
Was there any other comments? Okay.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Amendment resolution entering in contract with Cold Water Consulting, Inc., LLC in the amount of ten thousand for additional project management services for the completion of phase two of the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Job and family amendment, eighteen six thirty-six, adopted October third, two thousand and eighteen, entering in a renewal purchase service agreement with Medina County Sheltered Industries, DBA Windfall Industries, Wadsworth, to provide work experience program for supplemental nutrition assistance program recipients and OWF clients in fiscal year nineteen. Amendment is to reflect the end date will be November thirtieth, not September thirtieth.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Under sanitary, approve enter an agreement for sanitary lateral replacement with Gregory and Melissa Alicio at forty-one Edgewood Drive, Grafton, in the amount of one thousand seventy-five dollars and will be placed on their tax duplicate.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Proven enter an emergency contract with American Earth Supply in North Ridgeville in the amount of eighteen hundred for a failed sanitary connection at two three five six three Parkwood Drive, Columbia Township, to be paid from the sanitary repair and maintenance account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Engineer authorized various applications to OPWC round thirty-four for various projects. Pitts Road Culvert number zero four six six replacement, estimated cost is two hundred and forty-three thousand. Funding is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars from OPWC. Funding will be made available from the MGT account for the local share. West Road Bridge number fourteen twenty-seven replacement, project, estimated project cost is three hundred and eighty thousand with OPWC funding of two hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred. North Ridge Road resurfacing and water main replacement, estimated project cost is three million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars with the OPC funding request of three hundred and eighty thousand. Nowaga funding of one million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. North Ridge Road Bridge number zero seven twelve rehab, estimated cost is six hundred and ninety thousand with OPWC funding request of five hundred and ten thousand, six hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Lot of work going to happen.
Yeah.
More orange barrels for everybody.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Health Department approved change order number four to Sites Builder, Inc., for scheduled changes for construction of the new public health building in the amount of sixty-five thousand, twenty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. Additional time is needed for the new furniture installation and moving existing furniture and personnel into the new building prior to the demo of the existing building. This delay will push exterior site work into the winter months, requiring removal in the spring to finish portion of the asphalt parking lot.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye. I'm excited to see that completion.
It's huge.
It's going to be really nice.
It is.
The, the, let's take a moment. The Health Department building, those poor folks were in an inadequate facility for the last twenty years. While the building from the front looked good from the road, it had nice curb appeal if you've ever been in it. It, it, I'm sure you have.
It's very chock.
I was just, it, it, the, the, it was very chopped up, very hard to get a workflow in, low ceiling, it's old brick inside it. It, the, the Health Department had grown so large, even when it was just a county Health Department, that the facility just didn't really meet their needs. And then when the TB clinic was, was shuttered, they were able to move the WIC program over to the old TB area, but still the, the room was inadequate. With the consolidation of Lorain and Ollieria into one general health district, it'd be, you know, there was no way to be able to continue using the building they were in. So this wasn't just to build a new building and of course they, the building's built to be, you know, a multi-generational building. And it, using that site is, was hard to, it's hard to repurpose right on the site when you've got a building right on the site and you're working around your old building and trying to move in. So that we, we had some challenges, but the other thing is we're going to demolish the old stepping stone that's been an eyesore.
Yeah.
It looked terrible thirty years ago sitting out. So the whole area with the, the Health Department building, all that'll be taken down and cleaned and, and give a, a fresh look to that campus over there with the DD and the CBC after and give a fresh look to that campus over there with the DD and CBC after jail and the Health Department.
Well, just so people know, we did the project management on the building, but it's not our building, it's the Health Department's building, it's their funding. They actually saved a lot of money over the years to put a big chunk of money down on that building, too.
We did, we did the project management with them on the building, and we did all the bidding and the purchasing. We're also doing a piece of the finance. They had a good amount of cash for the building that they had saved in anticipation of this, and then there'll be, we'll do a key piece of the bonding for the remainder of the building, but that's yet to be determined until we finish the project.
Construction notes now.
We're in construction notes right now, but they're going to retire some more of those construction notes, so I don't think it's going to be that big of a borrowing piece, but we'll see going into next year.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Approved change order number five to Sites Builders, Inc., in the amount of $59,503.36 for the additional unit cost for clean fill for project.
So moved, second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Public comment.
This is, on the change, let me back up on this for a second.
Cost for clean fill?
This was not, this was a not to exceed.
Odd dollar amount, then.
I, it's a max, because it goes by.
A percentage of something?
Tons or some, yeah, something. I had the same crazy question, you know, it was like, is it not to exceed? Why did you say $60,000 and be done with it? But, but it didn't work out that way. I just want the resolution that says not to exceed, because this is going to be by demand. We had compaction problems under the new building with poor soil conditions, and they caused considerable disruption on the project. We had the same problem with the Justice Center, and we had to bring the bell footer, put big bell footers in over there, couldn't get compaction. Then the parking lot we worked on forever, finally had to put earthquake netting underneath the parking lot.
Remember you talking about that?
Yeah, the engineers here never heard of earthquake netting. I watched it on Discovery Channel, and I asked them, we could use it here, and it ended up a compaction problem. But we're anticipating the potential, when we start the demo on the Health Department building, of having similar compaction problems and fill problems there. So we just want to be prepared in case we need this, so that's why it's a not to exceed. If we don't need it, they're not going to order it, so I just want you to know that.
Great. Okay, public comment, Mr. Phillips?
W. Phillips, 461 Winwood Way, Avon Lake, Ohio. Back to the subdivision regulations. The language to the proposed changes to Sections 609 or 60102 were made by Kristen Brandon. There was no legal input from the prosecutor, Gerald Lenas. The last time I checked, Kristen Brandon is not a licensed attorney. I respect Kristen Brandon and value her efforts and all the time she spent on making the changes. Want to talk about the problem of public input. At prior meetings, prior comments were made by myself, David Ashton Hirsch, and to date, no changes have been made. On your agenda, public input is Item C, comes after Item B, after the resolutions, after the vote. So there's no input or discussion on agenda items to get the input before the vote, that's a problem. The commissioners don't have a monopoly on this problem of public input. The worst city is City Lorraine, that doesn't even allow any kind of public input. Also, public input is before the reports, which is Items D, E, F, and G, so you don't get the opportunity to comment on any of the reports made by the various people. Solutions to the public input, need to change your rules to allow three minutes on each agenda item. You also need five minutes at the end of an agenda, that's similar to what Avon Lake does. Also, Avon Lake has a total time limit for an agenda items when you have groups who talk on an issue on an agenda item. The example and the reason why you have the Phillips three minutes rule is because of the sales tax issue where we had a large number of people, and that was the catalyst. If you had a total time limit on that, you could have avoided the problem. So I hope, I hope something gets done on this. Comments were made previously. I haven't heard any efforts of it being addressed. I'd like to see it be addressed. If you really value public input, and you don't criticize people, or you don't like what they talk about, and you really care, you allow for public input, you know? You are public officials. The last time I checked, you don't have an entitlement to that office. You serve as trustees, fiduciaries to the people. We elect you, and our choice is if you don't do the job, we just won't, we won't elect you. And that's why there was a proposed seven district charter, because people aren't happy in this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yep, one more coming up. Teresa Shea, 519 East Avenue. In 2016, the commissioners hoped to establish funding for transportation with a 0.25% sales tax. The increase was to be a 50/50 split, 50% transportation, 50% other county needs. 74% of the voters would not approve the sales tax. The sales tax was voted, passed by the commissioners alone in 2017 December, the day after a meeting I attended. The bulk of the proceeds went to shore up county departments and combat the opiate crisis, and a very small part to buses. I was here the day the head of the United Way said that sales tax was not enough for public transit at the original, before the vote, and said move would not support the sales tax unless more went to buses and transit. The commissioners pulled a fast one on us and didn't listen to the public. It was one of my first meetings here. I was shocked. I was also shocked when the commissioners overrode the votes of citizens and passed the sales tax. Lori Kokowski said the state had increased tax and no one complained, so why couldn't you? Now we are in dire straits for public transportation. Not enough has been done. The sales tax we have all been paying, even children pay that sales tax, has gone to things that was never for, and the 50% split towards buses was ignored. What about honesty and integrity and helping all in our county? Adding another tax for things to do with drugs is not okay. Having poor people who have no money pay for the opiate crisis, and now we are raising monies through dog tags and adoption? Poor people can't afford the tags as-is, and now you're raising them. I support the dog kennel and what they do, but I can't afford it. When I was first here in Lorraine County 25 years ago, I was a homeless, beaten-up person from another state. I had two dogs in my car in August. It was very expensive to buy tags and has been since. I think we all need a dog kennel, but not by causing some people hardship trying to pay extra for tags and not being able to adopt dogs. Did you forget the financial status of the neighborhood it is in? Thank you.
Seeing none, Mr. Cordez.
I yield the council.
Ms. Dennis?
I have one matter of pending court action to discuss in executive session.
I hope everyone had a nice holiday weekend. Mine was filled with fun, with family gatherings and food, and had a great time on Saturday. Commissioner Sueda had a golf outing. My son Jordan and I played, and we placed in that golf outing. We placed last. We actually got a prize for being last. I didn't, wasn't even going to turn my scorecard in. We were 75. 75 is not a bad score for 18 holes, but.
Well, and you've got mulligans and your scramble, it seems to set those, you never really know about those scores.
Yeah, well.
But you must have given a good score because you've got last place.
I did. It was picture-perfect weather, and Pogie did a great job on the food. It was excellent.
Thank you.
And had a nice time, so thank you for that. It's been a short week, so that is the end of my report.
All right, and I want to, let's see, last Wednesday, I attended the meeting in Grafton for EDF Renewables, where they're working with the mayor and members of the community to establish solar farms. They had a great overview of how the project would unfold. One of the things I was listening for in any of those projects is the provision that in the event of, at the end of one of these 37-year contracts, the firm is no longer there or it's been sold several times, and then if they abandon it, what's actually going to happen? Who's going to take care of the restoration and the cleanup? And in this instance, I haven't been able to dig in real deep, I want to look at it, but they do have a provision for providing bond money through the county, so that in the event that that organization were gone, those property owners would still have an option of repurposing their land. Now, the only thing I will say is that I hope that they're stressing, I didn't hear it come out that prominently, but when you, when you place a lease on your land, it's going to be a revenue source, but that lease is going to travel with any sale of the property. So if you have a 20-acre parcel and 15 acres are solar, if you have a lease on that solar, that property gets sold as a solar farm. But that'll all be coming out. CHIPS had their summer picnic at Mexican Mutual the same evening, and CHIPS is a group of young adults led by Mike Farrar over in Lorraine, and they're committed to community service, so it was nice to see a picnic to celebrate their work. Thursday was the second meeting for the Avon Sheffield Bicycle Master Plan and Safe Routes for Students that was held in Avon, well-attended, and that'll be unfolding. The unfortunate part about any of those plans, we're probably five to 10 years away from a full completion, but it's going to be a nice plan, and Avon is rightfully concerned about having safe routes for children to and from their schools, given their increase in traffic. Later that day, I went to Cleveland to film our spots for the Lorraine County Battle of the Best Burger, as well as our Cupcake Crawl, both occurring here in October. The Battle for the Best Burger has 12 entrants, local restaurants who will be participating. Each burger is, I believe, $9, so regardless which establishment you go to, if you want to test their entry, it's $9, and as long as you partake in two of them, you get to vote.
We're going to gain a couple pounds out.
Yeah, that's going to be trouble. The Cupcake Crawl is all month. You don't have to do them all in a day. You can spread it out through the month. There is no voting. It's just each cupcake bakery will be supplying a seasonally flavored cupcake for you to test and try. This one's going to actually include bakeries that are even on the fringe of our county because we want to bring other folks in to see all that we're offering here, and by having an inclusive cupcake crawl, we're hoping they crawl into our county. So be sure to try to support those businesses who are working hard to boost the local restaurant economy. Friday was the Labor Day luncheon at LCCC. The special guest speaker was Baldemar Valasquez. He's president of FLOC, and he had quite a story to tell. You just, you never, you never get desensitized to some of the stories and the fights that labor had to endure in order to find rights for organizing, and he spoke about the efforts outside of the United States where those efforts almost certainly guarantee you'll be shot or killed. So you just, it just gives you a profound sense of admiration for those who have fought those battles. Friday evening, it was my 18-year-old grandson's birthday and his first football game since CYO days. He is on the kickoff team, but I was excited because, Happy Birthday Sonny Congilio, he told me the greatest threshold that he is looking forward to is the right to vote.
It's a vote for his grandma.
Yes. So I was pleased to see his interest following in my footsteps. Saturday was my golf outing. Saturday evening was the pop orchestra here in Elyria, well-attended. Sunday was Labor Fest. Congratulations to everybody who made that another successful event. The rain held off till a little later in traditional labor style. They were there through the rain and the sunny weather. Great food, great booths. It was a fun day, and people seemed to really be enjoying the cooler temperatures this year. And then in the evening, in the rain, I did get to go to St. Jude's Annual Festival. They had a good attendance, given the rain and the way it shook out for that evening. And finally, I want to introduce the newest member of our team. My administrative assistant, who'll be with us part-time, is Mo Simon. Mo, would you like to say hello? That concludes my report. Thank you.
For correspondence?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
That's it.
Executive session.
Motion to go into executive session is outlined by both the administrator and assistant county prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.